Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Move for approval of the agenda?
Move for approval.
Second?
Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us down to our city administrators' report.
So you've got your report in your packet. I didn't have time to update, give you any extra information, except item five. We finished the interviews Monday night for our tourism director, and I've got one person that the committee chose. I'll be talking to her tomorrow, and we'll see where that goes. If we don't come to an agreement, then what we'll do is open up the tourism director position and advertise further out. But I think we have a good candidate. The committee felt that there was one good candidate, and we'll discuss tomorrow and see what happens. And that's all I've got. If somebody has any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Takes us to our staff reports. David, you're up first.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
You see there on the Heritage Commission, we had our... I was here just about a month ago, right before it happened. We had our event, the weekend of the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth. Had good turnout, and today Charlie downstairs reached out to me. He's got some videos ready to post. Well, I say "ready," they're still rendering, so hopefully next week we'll get videos posted. Thanks to all that helped with it. It was a good event. On the building department there, you can see, not much has changed on the information down at the bottom. See what we've done the past month. And then down on the property maintenance, that's what most times been spent on here this past month. That is about it. Unless anybody has questions? Short and sweet?
No questions.
Gary Roth, you're up.
Well, okay. He thought I was gonna take longer. You looking for your report? Well, look at my report. Did I send the wrong one to Pam? Okay, well, then I don't have a copy of it here somehow. So, this is what we did. We did clean some storm rings this week, patched potholes. Today, we did a pretty major patch, Merchant Jefferson main.
Speaking of that, I would've got a compliment already from one of the people who lived down there. She just... You probably had this all scheduled, but she had called Megan yesterday about potholes, and she just wanted to say, you know, Megan said she would get ahold of Gary, and then she... My street was fixed today. So, she said, "I just wanna thank everybody that everybody done their job," you know? And as far as potholes, too, if you see potholes, we need to know Happy... We need to know about it, because we've got a lot of them to fix.
And I have a list going. It's just been here lately. Every time it's not raining, we have to mow.
Yeah.
So now, hopefully, we get... We're caught back up with mowing, can keep up with mowing, and so we'll have another crew. One crew mowing, one crew potholing. And we mowed and weeded, too. A lot. We did a lot of moving from the police department in the back part of City Hall to the basement, to the garage, getting everything ready for the remodel project. We did a repair on a water valve and some pipes at the parkhouse that we discovered when the PD moved up there. We made some new ends for the tube at the dog park. They're made, painted, just not installed yet. Repaired the streetlights on Main Street. It turned into be a big project. The wire was burnt under the road, and the conduit was collapsed where we couldn't pull the wire, so we did have to dig part of that up. Brush hogged the detention basins on Progress Parkway, drainage area in Point Base. The part we haven't been mowing on Progress Parkway, we just brush hogged and knocked it down. St. Mary's Road. Assisted fish and wildlife over at the levee a little bit, provided them some equipment to... Or some braces and stuff to use, and got the concrete for them. We did maintenance on mowing equipment. Today, we did get the signs up on Main Street for the Fish and Wildlife Refuge. We didn't get back to put the stormy one up yet, but we'll probably get that one tomorrow. Anything?
Personnel? You full?
I'm full.
Good.
Doing good. Just doing great.
Good. Very good. Thanks, Gary. That's Joe.
Make an airplane quiet.
Airman.
Yes, I'm next.
You're up, brother.
Before I get started too much into it, if you saw in report before that we had our award supper not too long ago, and we retired some people, and one person that didn't make it that night is actually here tonight, so I brought a plaque for Mike Jokers for 36 years of service in fire department.
Oh, my God.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you. That is great. Thank you so much.
Well, you're too young to retire.
I am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they forced you out.
Yeah, they were done with you.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, very much so.
Thank you so much.
That's quite a group.
Yeah.
There's no question about camaraderie in the group. Or your...
On the report, the radio that was supposed to be installed on Monday, they canceled, and they are coming back tomorrow morning to get it installed. So our new base radio will be out there. That gives us the capabilities of dispatching our own people and all the other fire departments countywide. We can also assist with police and ambulance dispatching out of there, too, if, for some reason, 911 would go down. So it's like an extra auxiliary dispatch location. So that radio should be installed tomorrow morning. We finally completed our LED light project, work on Wednesday nights. They're in the process now of making the contacts to get the audit done, and once we get the audit done, then we can submit for the rebate, and we can get that closed out and finished. The painting thing, we talked about the bid last time. I've been in contact with a few sandblast contractors. It's actually harder to find than I thought to find mobile sandblasters, but I currently have three already contacted. So whenever we approve the painting, that I can get with the painter, and we can talk amongst us and with the sandblasters and figure out exactly what we need and get somebody going on that. Started purchasing some of the equipment off of the community foundation grants that we talked about, the radio, the lights, and things like that, so get some of that accomplished. And I put a note in here, Felix Myers on our department, informing me that there's a Homeland Security grant coming available, and we are hoping to submit, if I can get enough time to do it, a grant for all new mobile radios. Our mobile radios in our trucks now are only about 15 years old, but the last two that had broken, we had to take them into ready repair, and they had to buy an old radio off of eBay to get parts to fix ours. There's a no-match on this grant. It's a straight-up money part, and the quote I have right now is for $58,000 to replace our mobiles. It won't do anything for handhelds, but we can submit for mobiles. My best guess is we'll probably be lucky to get about half of that, but we're gonna give it a shot, as long as I can get the grant finished in time. That's pretty much it. We've had a couple of knock boxes ordered, waiting on installs on several of them, and I've been talking with Dave extensively about some different buildings around town on knock boxes and inspections and stuff. Any questions?
Morning. Three years it's been on there. Where would they need sandblasters?
We've got the structural steel, where we have like our anchor place for rappelling, and then the handrails and things.
Yeah.
If you guys want to see pictures, I could send you some pictures of them, but there's handrails and things like that that are starting to show rust, and then we have steel rails around between the different levels that the grating sits on, and those are starting to rust around there, too, so we need to get those blasted and taken care of. And like I said before, I know nothing about sandblasting, so for me to try to tell them what we need is kind of silly, but we get the painter in there, and those two can converse, and then I can be there with them, and we can figure out what we need. It's gonna be a lot of spot blasting. It's not gonna be an overall blast-everything type thing, and the specs that I've got written make sure that we don't interrupt the galvanized coatings on the galvanized stuff we have, so it's just strictly the structural steel, not the galvanized.
Containment is the big thing on that.
That's part of my spec, too, that it should be contained, shouldn't interfere with fire department operations, and they clean up the mess whenever they're done. Is all part of my spec.
Right.
Any other questions?
Ken, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Any committee reports?
Not really, unless you want me to tell you that there's events on the 25th and 26th in the park. The 25th is fireworks. Evening is Friday night, and then the next day, we have our first movie in the park with the Park Board and Library are co-hosting, and that's gonna be Disney's Frozen. So we're still getting some details lined out for both of those events. If anybody knows any local organizations or something that want to participate, just let them know. Let us know. But, yeah, hoping it's gonna be a good turnout, bringing in some portable restrooms, hopefully, so... That's it.
Great. There you go.
Alrighty. Are there any public comments? Public comments? Takes us down to the consent agenda.
Move through, Mayor.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
I see that Alderman Donovan was abstaining from that one?
Yes.
Is that the minimum? Yeah.
Alrighty, let's move on to old business. This is the second reading of Bill Number 4432, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement with Vern Baumann Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the 2021 paving program at a price of $51.29 per ton delivered.
Move through. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4432 now becomes ordinance 4352.
Thanks, Sis. Thank you. Takes us to new business, first reading of Bill Number 4433, An Ordinance Amending the City of St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances, Chapter 520, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article 2, Excavation in Public Streets, Section 520.140, Work to Comply with Specifications as Set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to Bill Number 4434, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement with Ritter Painting Services, LLC of St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the Firehouse Paint Project, the amount not to exceed $35,800.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
Call in favor of that?
Aye.
Takes us to the second reading of An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, I'm sorry, Bill Number 4434, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement with Ritter Painting Services, LLC of St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the Firehouse Paint Project, not... In the amount not to exceed $35,800.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson. Yes. Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4434 now becomes ordinance 4353.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4435, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Proposal for Professional Design Services with Cochrane Engineering for Electrical Systems Distribution Modifications at the Water Plant. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Bob, you have something to say?
Yeah, the wording in this and stuff was "not to exceed" was not included in that. Where our painting bid...
So I don't always put in a "not to exceed," because I don't know if they get into this, if we're gonna have, you know, some other issue that's uncovered, then we would have to... We would not be able to authorize anything extra if it's a small amount. We'd have to come back to the board.
So wouldn't that just be an amendment?
Could be, but we can authorize without coming back to the board for a small amount.
Yeah, that's the first and second reading issue, too.
Right. So this is it?
I'd say so.
Right.
You can ask for an amendment and include that with Section 1.
So what's our timetable on the project? I mean, are we trying to get this done?
We're moving along, whereas we would wait probably until budget time to put this in the next year's budget.
This is an electrical problem we have over there. So there is some urgency in it.
I agree.
Yeah, I just would like to see, you know, a little more defined number there, but...
So again, in Section 1, you put attached here, too, had a cost not to exceed $28,400.
Are change orders not addressed in the contract?
Change orders, I know, are in our ordinances.
So...
So we can affirm a change order?
Yeah, a change in scope is merely just a change order. I mean, that's a business-as-usual situation, right?
Yeah.
So, a change order within your spending limits or the mayor's spending limits, there's no real issue here, right?
I don't think so. I mean, as long as you're authorizing them to do the work, and if something would pop up that would be... That would need to be resolved, but would need to be taken care of as soon as possible, instead of coming back to the board possibly in two weeks or, you know...
So not that I want to slow this down, but that wouldn't preclude some wording in there, "not to exceed."
Right, so engineering fees are no different than somebody working on a contract doing the physical work, then we can do a change order at any time.
If it says "not to exceed," then it has to come back to the board. If it doesn't say "not to exceed..."
Regardless of spending or the dollar amount?
Because if it's a small enough amount, I think as the city administrator, I could authorize that.
Right.
But if you have a "not to exceed," and Ritter comes in and says, "I need to trim another door, it's gonna cost another $500," it's like, well, I gotta go back to the board and get that authorized, because it would exceed his provisional amount.
I was just wondering why, you know, mainly we didn't have that included in there, but I'm not trying to delay the project by any...
Again, if you want to include that in the language here, just pass an amendment. If we can pass it tonight with the second reading, it's just you want that language included as part of Section 1.
I'd be more comfortable with something like this, that we know we need to do, that if there's a small change, I'd be fine with leaving the language alone, so that Happy can just authorize that change.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, too. I'm just...
Yes, that's why it's not included.
So do we have a motion or...
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We had a motion and a second on the table. Mike made the motion, and Jeff seconded it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for a second reading?
Second.
Call in favor of that?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us, the second reading of Bill Number 4435, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Proposal for Professional Design Services with Cochrane Engineering for Electrical Systems Distribution Modifications at the Water Plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4435 now becomes ordinance 4354.
Okay, this takes us to Bill Number 4436, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement with MB Construction, LLC, for the Water Main Replacement Project, 21-855, in the amount not to exceed $201,609.
Paul, I'd like to have a discussion about that.
That'd be great.
I guess, and further in the conversation before and stuff, a little concerned about this contractor, and we've never worked with him, and I know in the... You know, that Cochrane has reviewed him and stuff.
They recommended him.
I'm just wondering why, for $12,000, we wouldn't use the same company that we used for the last one, and had, from what I understand, very good results.
That's a very good question, but, you know, I think there's probably some legalities in here that have to be looked at, too, so...
Meaning what, being obligated to accept the lowest bid?
Well, that's part of it, and it's... $12,000 is a substantial amount of money, you know? A little bit different when we did the hall, when we did the renovation here, it was not quite as much money, you know, when we made that decision, so... My bigger concern on it, and I understand yours, too, is what happens with competitive bidding? You know, we're doing away with that, you know? We... And I looked at this company, I looked them up online. I didn't find a lot of information about them, but apparently they've been doing this for 17 years. Now, I got some questions, too. They're not from here, and how they can do that, but they did the job, so...
Yeah.
I have it, and they're not registered with the BB, Better Business Bureau, but I saw no complaints about this company, so I know we don't know much about them, so...
Right, from what I'm being told and stuff, most of their work has been in Iowa, northern Missouri, and northern Illinois.
Okay.
But they haven't worked down in this area and stuff, and asking, you know, see who's worked in the area where this line is and stuff, I mean, you know, there's some rock in the area to be concerned, that could be an extra to us, and I know under the last waterline, you know, project, we had a... We had an add-on, but we also had a nice deduct in the end, you know? They erased a big portion of that and stuff, but I'm just curious if everybody thinks their opinion for one, and two, if somebody local will treat us like that as compared to somebody not from the area and stuff? And I don't have any connections with CE or Bowman's or any of them and stuff, so...
Wasn't there some sort of clause that if a local bidder is within a certain amount, we can still go with a local bidder and keep a local than to accept the lowest bid?
It is not in the current policy.
The county does.
And I... You probably still would not be within that range.
Usually, it's either tied or within 2% or 3%. This is gonna be larger than that.
Really, like 5% over? I mean, I guess, you haven't really justified rejecting the lowest bid. I haven't heard anything that I can use to defend that decision.
So what we're talking about is Cochrane's process for vetting MB? Is that what...
I... We don't have any knowledge of what Cochrane did to check them out.
Do you need to speak to that?
Absolutely.
That's why Dave Van Leer is here.
So, essentially, anytime we put this type of project out for bid, an open bid, we end up in a reference check, trying to find... Trying to bet out contractors, as you said. The day of the bid opening, we requested references from MB, and for what it's worth, this is the list we were given. I agree with the statement, a lot of projects in Illinois and Iowa. The two Missouri projects that were included on the reference list were a project in Ralla and a project in Poplar Bluff. Again, as... I agree with the statement 100%. CE did great on the last project. I also agree there's some value in having local contractors doing the work in the event that quick responses are needed. But through review of the references, we really didn't come up with anything that we felt justified recommending to award this contract to your second-low bidder. Who provided those references? The contractor. So... And we call... I'm not certain on this one. We called roughly half of them, just asking them how the projects that MB performed went, and that's what I'm referencing to. Out of those calls, nothing came up that we felt justified us not recommending them. So you relied on the references they gave you? Absolutely. And I... And I understand your thought process there. They're not gonna give us the jobs that went bad. Right. Have you ever worked with them before? We have not. What a question for alliances. Have you ever worked with them?
No.
In all of your...
Sure. Okay.
No, we haven't worked with them. I've called throughout the company, and nobody in our company has worked with them.
When you say "company," you're talking about all the alliances?
Iowa, Missouri, Kentucky, Tennessee, everywhere.
But we still have no grounds to...
I'm not gonna say that publicly, but you know, an engineer that has recommended the lowest bid, there's a significant price difference between the lowest and the second lowest. So my advice would be to accept the lowest bid. And you have a fiduciary duty to attack the rules to get the best value out of the part of the bidding process, so I have to advise you to follow the engineer's recommendation, the administration's recommendation, and accept the lowest bid.
And there's things in place to protect us if they...
That's right.
If they underperform or fail to perform what they promised.
You've got the money on the staff that'll be there for all...
Well, yes, we're under contract to do construction inspection for you also, and to be very frank with you, from my perspective, I would prefer to be doing inspection for a contractor that we had worked with before, and we knew firsthand the quality of their work. And that, by far and near, makes our job easier. But again, in this instance, we could...
Well, everybody on this list had their first time.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we're talking about, so...
Well, I guess the other thing, Happy, what was the range of bids? It was huge.
Yeah, it went from... It's on the sheets that was handed out, anywhere from 201 to 347, here's 346,000. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a red flag to me.
201 to 347.
And you're checking out the references. I mean, did you go as far as into the bonding? We did not contact the company that they bond with. Prior to you entering a contract with them, they would have to provide performance and payment bonds for the contract.
Bob, what was that red flag you just mentioned? I'm curious.
The red flag?
Yeah.
That variance in the bill, you know, in a small contract like that, from 201,000 to 346. I mean, that's huge for a small job like that and stuff, but I'm...
But you're 13,000 above in your second-lowest bid, and only 3,000 in between the second and third. You just... You caught my ear when you said that's a red flag. I want to know...
Yeah, I'm just... That's, you know, why some of the bids were... I mean, I understand contractors, when they're busy, they bid accordingly, and when they're not, they bid accordingly and stuff, but... We commonly see that there's a... We commonly see that there's a, there's usually a group of bidders who are tighter and then there was.
Right.
Other contractors for whatever reason weren't as, weren't as competitive. You'll see on the bid tab, the engineer's estimate for the project was two sixteen, we had the low bid at two oh one, the two thirteen, and then a two forty-seven. So I felt those, those three bids were generally consistent with the engineer's estimate. So the two thirteen is still under the engineer's cost estimate that we were going off of to begin with. I personally would like to see it stay local and that, to me, is a tangible benefit. But, I mean, it's still under the original estimate, there's, I don't know, I don't know, I don't have a problem with MB at all, I've never heard of them, but.
Well, I would tell you.
We preach, we preach all the time to our residents, shop local, shop local.
I understand that, but there's, there's some.
What message do we send when we don't do it?
Well, what message was.
People have to compete in a market, I mean, that's what it is.
That's it, and like I say, I, I love that, I love the idea, but upon the man sitting in my rights recommendation, that's why, I'm, I'm just saying, we. Sorry, but I'm not, I, I understand all your point, very good points, but, but you know, we have a responsibility to do the right thing.
Right.
And, and if we're, if we're not, then.
I understand that, and I'm not questioning his recommendation because his recommendation should be just as he did. But it's our job as representatives of the public to also do what's right.
It, it's your job is to, to do what's right for the public, to, to prevent us from, from being in a lawsuit, Bob, you can't, just because the public wants you to do this, we can't break a law? That's crazy to think that, I understand what you're, but.
We're not breaking a law, remark?
I made my recommendations, if you wanna talk about those kind of issues, we'll do it in the closed session.
But we're also going with the lowest bid, which is saving our taxpayers money.
Over ten thousand dollars.
So that's part of our responsibility as well.
And I, as conservative as the next. But.
I just don't see how they can have all their workers come in, pay the hotel bill for that, which does bring us revenue on, on that end too, but how they can come in that much cheaper without cutting corners somewhere? That's my problem with it, when we have local guys who sleep at home that are doing it.
It, it's an unknown, I think.
And they're hauling all their equipment from wherever they're from, all our equipment's already local, I don't see how they can do it that cheap without cutting corners somewhere.
They, they do that going in, Joe, they, they knew where they were coming from and where they lived and they looked at the project and they believed that they can do it, so.
They went to Poplar Bluff, that's, that's not.
Poplar Bluff is.
Man, that's a.
To the long haul too, from.
They're in a bed, so.
Might have been a lot bigger job too.
Could have been.
They had listed three hundred and eighty thousand, that's the size of the project, they didn't pop their bluff.
Is there any possibility they could use local labor somewhat or?
The majority.
They all wanna regroup on it, I'm fine, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sign my name to something that's not right. I'm, I'm shop local too, but this old boy is not gonna put his name on something, so you wanna rethink it, regroup, shut the project down, it's up to you guys, y'all.
We're all entitled to our own opinions.
That's right, so.
Where are we at on it? Are we, we've had a motion in a second?
We had, no, we just had discussion. So that's what we'll do, is, is, is there any more discussion?
I spoke my piece, sir.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I mean, we could go to a, a vote, right?
Well, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
One opposed, okay.
Two opposed.
Two opposed, okay.
I'll make a motion for a second reading.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I take which two opposed to a second reading?
I don't have a problem with the second reading, I'm gonna oppose it on the second reading too, I think.
Okay, so we're gonna approve of the second reading?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need a second on the?
I did.
Thank you.
So this is the second reading of Bill number forty-four thirty-six, an ordinance of the City of Saint Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with MB Construction LLC for Water Main Replacement Project twenty-one dash eight five 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 in the amount not to exceed two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
No.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
No.
Alderwoman Armroster.
Yes.
Five yes, two no, one absent, Bill number forty-four thirty-six now becomes ordinance forty-three fifty-five.
Thank you, is there any other business? If there's no other business, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Call the work session ordered, everybody approve the agenda for me?
Move approval.
Well, you can sit there, just be quiet.
You're asking a lot.
That's true.
Well, oh, wow. All right, Happy, it's all yours. Okay, a couple of items on here, Greg Helbert is here to make a presentation on a couple of things, one is, there's a strip of land adjacent to the parking lot at the Lucent Building. We looked at it, he was thinking it needed some repair, I said it didn't, he said, well, why don't you sell it to me or give it to me, I said, talk to the board. So that's why he's invited here to talk about that, and then we also have the second item, which is a sign on city property at Highway sixty-one. So if you have any particular questions or Greg wants to speak up on, on that strip of land and why that would be advantageous for him to have it as opposed to the city, I mean, we can move on that.
We can start with that, I've got a few things I added, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess everybody's, I'm Greg Helbert. By the way, for people that don't know me, I think everybody does, mostly, I'm one of the owners of the Lucent property. We brought a new tenant in, effective June first, and they, they're the ones that kinda gave us a, a list of recommendations or. Things that they'd like to see improved around the property, one thing is they're gonna have a lot of heavy truck traffic, so they're gonna be turning in on that road that's between Bob's property and mine. And just ask for that to be kinda brought up to speed, I was under the impression it was a city street, I mean, it's owned by the city, it was given to the city in eighty-five by the IDC. Happy walked it with me and Dave and he mentioned it doesn't fit the definition of the city street, whatever that means, I don't know, but it's, it's city property. I'm willing to put money into it and, and bring it up to speed if we need to, I mean, there's, there's cracks that need to be addressed, stop signs faded away, it's, it's minor stuff. But the city's not gonna work on it and take care of that for us, especially with us bringing businesses to town, then give the property up and let somebody take care of it that will. It's kinda where I'm coming from, I don't wanna hinder your access to your property.
Right.
And that wording would be in place, I'm sure you've got a lot of argument on that, and I don't want the property, but I'll take it, I don't wanna put money into the city's property, is my thing. So a little cooperation there would go, go a long way, they're, they're hung up on that, so we just wanna keep them happy and keep them in town. They are gonna produce at least twelve jobs starting out too, which is, it's not a lot, but it's a starting point, we also have a tenant in the rear of the property. And they're currently at eleven employees with potential to be up to twenty-five by the end of this year. So that property's finally producing jobs again, and it's been a long time. And we've put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into that property the last few years and a lot of money. So that's item one, we can have discussion on it, if the city wants to put a stop sign on it, look at the cracks and we can revisit this at the next work session, let's do that. Um, or if anybody has questions, we can, I can try to answer them.
I mean, the board can make a decision if they wanna keep it, if we, if they wanna keep it, then Gary and I will come down and take a look and, and I think if, maybe some cracked ceiling, I don't know if it needs to be repaved compared to some of the other, other streets, but some.
No, I don't think so.
We have to do some sealing on it and I've already asked Gary to put another stop sign up anyway.
I know the budget's been set for twenty twenty-one, I'm sure, but, and this is an added expense to it, but it'd be something we'd like to see addressed really quickly.
Do we know how much we're talking about?
No, but the estimate for cost is?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not, it's not a mill and pave, it's not a, we don't need to repave it, it just. Well, he's classifying it that he's worried that it's gonna be, it'll deteriorate quicker with the, the heavy truck traffic as the way it sits now. Uh, it doesn't look any worse than some of the streets that we're classifying as a six or seven on a scale of one to ten. So Greg, this, this truck traffic, is it gonna be going, I mean, they'll be coming down, I imagine Market into Tenth and they'll, they'll be making that right?
Well.
Into that parking lot, or they'll be going all the way to the back of the building?
Both, they, they come both ways on Tenth Street and I'm sure Bob knows too with his truck traffic that GPS brings these guys in from every direction, when they come down Chadwell or Tenth Street from the care center end, it makes a mess of things.
Yeah, that's, that's not good, cuz those trucks will bottom out on the railroad track.
Well, that and that ninety-degree turn, you know.
Yeah, that's.
It's, it's bad.
That's what hurt Bob with this taking that.
You can't fit two cars right there by the trailer park.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So we're trying to look at other ways to try to get truck traffic directed more directly there, and the other thing is that putting a name on that street. It's gonna be a more direct route to come down Market, the way the GPS works, you know, it's gonna be your shortest distance. And by naming that street, that would help tremendously, bring traffic off Market, and then yes, that's where most traffic would come from, but right now it comes from both sides.
Yeah.
So face-wise, that, that street's frying pretty good shape, cuz that's always had big, heavy trucks on it, right?
Thousands of them over the years, but there's actually two layers of pavement there. You know, the last time it was paved was when that addition you just bought, you know, was put on there, that whole street was paved over the top of the old one, you know, that was there, but. And I mean, and not to question, you know, Greg about what your tenant wants, but you sure they're not wanting the area between the pavement and your building paved, cuz I know you've done.
No, that, that section would be irrelevant, they're not gonna use that area, they're not gonna stage trucks or anything there.
And of course, you know, my only concern is, is, is uh, whatever the possibility might be of getting a railroad crossing back in and, and having a discussion with some employees at UP. Uh, if that's not a street, uh, if there's just an easement there, uh, of course, we have city utilities on that street also and stuff. It may hinder our chance of ever getting that crossing back in if there is one, and so.
And I'm fine, let's keep it a city street, but let's just put a little, little money into it and.
I'd rather CS do that myself.
Yeah, and I, and it, you know, one, I have to, you know, I wanna applaud you for what you guys have done over there, cuz that's done nothing but helped.
Oh, yeah.
You know, cuz about the time we bought our property and completely repainted, tuck pointed and everything, you know, that was going downhill and stuff, so you guys have definitely. Definitely approved the area for all of us and stuff, but I just don't wanna ever lose my chance of getting that crossing back in.
Right.
We still get objections from trucks, uh, I've been to MODOT, trying to get them to put signs up on the end of Chadwell, uh, you know, of course, the city's spent about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in redoing Chadwell out there. It's a lot better than it is, but it's still the name. But anyhow, uh, yeah, we don't have any other choice but to come down Chadwell now, hopefully that can get changed. I, I, I can't tell you, I've beat my head against the wall more than once with meetings over there, attorneys, uh. You know, I just know it diminishes my chances.
What would we have to do to get it named and get it official and all that stuff?
Just name it, I guess.
What's the name you want?
I knew you'd ask that, but, I mean, there's gotta be a procedure for that, do we talk to the post office, to nine one one, to the city?
No, the board would have to approve a name, it'd be the same as a subdivision, the board would approve.
Are we taking recommendations now?
Yeah, it's not gonna be Joe Prince Lane.
I don't want it to be, uh, the people that developed that years and years ago and made it felt best, you know, the Eisenberg family.
Heisenberg.
Eisenberg Lane or something like that, I think that would be nice while there's still one.
Couldn't come up with a little short name, Joe?
Yeah, I don't like that.
I mean, or you gotta have something that GP, that it'd be, you know, it's a good thought, but.
I'd like to hear the GPS butcher it.
That's what it'd be, it'd need to be something, you know.
Can, can we, uh, I guess, provide you with some recommendations we'd like to see on there?
That would be good.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, that'd be good.
When's the next meeting for you guys?
Uh, two weeks, it'll be the twenty-fourth.
That's similar to what we're on, street naming, uh, we also own the, the Troutman Manufacturing Facility, Saint Gene Manufacturing, and there's a street there by the city park across from Valley's Field that is unnamed.
That is actually private property.
That's right.
Right, so I guess we can put whatever na, street name on there we want?
Yeah, I mean, you're.
I know it's private property, but I wasn't sure if there was any rules there.
As long as it's, so with nine one one, we'd have to submit it to nine one one just for approval, uh, but you don't wanna match anything or be close to anything that's within city limits to confuse nine one one responders.
Okay.
Yeah. So whatever name they reject, you can take it over there, I guess.
All right, so the next item, and I haven't brought this up yet, uh, on Tenth Street there, the houses across from our asphalt lot, there's a bunch of big trees in the yard, semis are just dragging across a little big time. They almost have to go over to the ditch side, to the west side of the street to make that passable, and that's tough with traffic coming in and out, especially with the amount of semis in and out of there now, so I've got a picture here.
Maybe there's not a lot more work on you.
There's no good to say.
All right, I'll even supply, I mean, if you guys can, can trim those trees back, I'm not sure how the rules work, I'll supply you guys with the lift to do it, it's just, uh, hell, I'll even haul the limbs off if you guys can get them on the ground, just to keep these tenants happy, they're. Even their, their trucks themselves are hitting, it's not just their big van trailers hitting, they're pretty low, but I don't know, since those trees are growing on private property, how that works, I guess there's some kind of a easement? Maintenance easement on those streets?
Yeah, it's down there.
Yeah, right before Stupes.
We also need a chunnel hole filled right there by the end of your concrete, right where.
Yeah.
The first entrance, that's the major.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't we, at the last time we talked about trees, that's the property owner's responsibility?
Yeah, isn't it, yeah.
Well, those aren't mine, so I, I need to go ask the neighbors to spend money to trim the trees?
I'll ask, I'll talk to them.
Okay, I mean, what if they don't have the funds to do that?
I think it's a nuisance violation, so that's the route we would go.
If you have a tree on a right of way, it should have a clearance.
Here a tree that hangs over the street, I believe we lowered that to ten foot.
Oh, wow.
Within that range.
Okay.
All I need to do is be notified and I'll notify them.
You need to see fourteen foot from there, isn't it?
Yeah, I was just saying, we lowered it to ten foot?
I mean, raised it, I'm sorry.
Raised it, maybe in industrial areas like that, we could be fourteen.
Raised it, well, yeah, I'm sorry.
Might be something.
I'm thinking bushes.
That whole street, that whole street would probably be look, good to look at, maybe changing that for just Tenth Street, because your traffic coming the other way probably has the same issues.
I think it makes it, it leaves twelve.
Yeah.
What's the school bus?
Van trailer's thirteen foot.
We can get by the ladder, yeah.
Okay.
That's a chunnel right there.
Oh, yeah, that's good size.
So Dave, you'll follow up on that?
Yeah, I'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, uh, there's a drainage ditch on the north side of our lot that we just sealed, that's up to a Kohler property and Meyer Holding property that we looked at.
Yeah.
Okay, was there discussion, I obviously couldn't make the last meeting, was there discussion on if that's gonna?
That's internal, Gary's gonna get on it when we have time.
Isn't that riprap?
Yeah.
Yeah, and a portion of it, not all of it, so we're gonna try to riprap the whole thing and clean up where it comes off of.
In the lower part, the lower part basically just restacking it.
Okay.
And then on the northwest side of property, Coin Street is the other street that accesses our property, we had some drainage issues, but Gary's addressed those and thank you for doing that.
We gotta shave the yard up when it's drying up too.
Oh, it'll settle. It, but it, it made a big difference, so appreciate that, so, that's really all I've got, unless anybody's got questions about the businesses.
A sign, just some of the sign. The city, you would ask for a sign up on the highway.
Yeah, that's right, I forgot, they didn't put that on here, so Happy kinda alluded to the fact that we can't put permanent signage added to that intersection because of, well, Mississippi Lime owns it or the city owns it, but we could put up some type of a banner.
Yeah.
Buckeyes has requested as much signage as they can get for directing truck traffic in eventually people to their retail location. So some kind of signage up there eventually that's permanent would be ideal, whether that's a possibility or not, I don't know, but in the meantime, I think we are gonna look at the, the banner with some T-posts or whatever you consider temporary.
Isn't that the way the new code reads? Yeah, hundred and twenty days max.
And then you just put a different looking sign up?
Nice try, yeah.
Just move the posts.
Yeah.
So Greg, what are you talking about in this area in the red, this triangle?
No. Well, okay, I see, I thought that was my ground break for a minute, yeah, somewhere, somewhere right there would be good, a lot of the traffic's coming off thirty-two, coming up the hill, Mississippi Lime beyond the left, so. Just some kind of signage, we can't put any at the corner because, you know, where that concrete wall turns in that directs them into there, so we're gonna put secondary signage, which has, which has to go through planning and zoning, I think, yet. Uh, off Coin Street, which is zone residential, and we're working on that.
So is that area inside that triangle, the red triangle, city property?
Yeah.
Is Mississippi Lime's pro, uh, sign on that, in that triangle?
As far as we can tell, yeah.
Okay.
There's some old agreement.
I don't know if it was a written agreement, if it was a handshake.
Yeah.
But they took over the maintenance of that corner. We used to mow it, and when they put that sign up there, they took over the maintenance of that.
Okay.
So I don't know what kind of agreement or anything was there.
So there's a permanent sign by Mississippi Lime there, but we won't allow him to put a permanent sign up there.
And I'm not gonna mow it. I don't have time.
So why can't we allow a sign there?
Well, I'm not saying you can't. It's, you have to make that decision and say, yes, they'll allow something like that to go on the front.
I thought it was over here by this little park area and stuff. That's why I was asking.
No, that's the rest of the street.
I mean, that space is pretty well wide open there. I don't see a problem with a sign there, you know, as long as it's-
If you did approve signage there, you guys would need to see a sketch or a drawing?
We got, we wanna see a drawing. We're drawing a-
Why don't I get something from their marketing department?
Not in the right of way.
And present that, and then you guys can make that decision.
As long as it's not in their right-of-way, you can put a sign there.
I'm pretty sure they still have to-
If it's a billboard, I'm not sure if, if, you know, we're looking at more of a business-sized sign. I mean, we'll clear it with them anyway, but I don't-
Talk to them, but I don't see where we, we shouldn't be allowing a sign up there in that area myself.
I would've, I was wondering if that was MODOT property, 'cause MODOT, you know, around an intersection, they own them.
Well, they own from the roadway out. You can't put in a si- a permanent sign in their, in their easement.
But I mean, they also own extra right-of-way, you know, a lot of those for future, whatever.
And with that, and with that spot, it doesn't block the view of the, of the turn there, so I, I think we're looking, getting a sign there, letting them put a sign up there.
And that, that corner's elevated a lot.
Yeah, it's elevated, so.
Yeah.
So I don't see why we shouldn't be moved for putting a sign up there.
I mean, if Mississippi Lime doesn't have a problem with it, I mean, to me, if they're mowing it-
Yeah, yeah.
If they're mowing it for an exchange of putting their sign there, to me, that means they're leasing it for the price of the mowing. If they don't have a problem with him adding a sign, I don't think we should pre- or prohibit him from doing so.
Well, I agree.
But if they got a problem with it, we still want to put a sign on it, we're gonna have to take over the mowing.
Well, that'll be an agreement between him and Mississippi Lime.
It's what I would have. No, I don't take no time.
I mean, their guy's gonna have to weed it around it, which is gonna cost Mississippi Lime more money, so I, that's an agreement between-
I don't think you have a problem with Mississippi Lime, to be honest with you.
No.
You know, one thing that I've signed there also and stuff, you know, is trucks coming either, you know, mainly, well, either way, north or south on there. You know, if people see, you know, a truck entrance or something like that, uh, maybe they'll stay back a little bit, 'cause they realize trucks make wide turns and stuff, but, you know, I can see it as a safety issue without a sign there.
And on the, on the safety side of things too, when you, when you come down Market from sixty-one, you get up over that hill. We need to have something about trucks entering or exiting, some kinda signage there kinda close to where the Kohler property is. Because I've seen it already, and they've only been there a few weeks. They, they whip out there, they can't see anything coming. Cars are just stopping quickly. And if they don't stop close enough, they gotta back up, because that semi's gotta get all the way out and around. And their trailer don't have time to straighten out sometimes before we flip their front bumper. So some kinda signage.
Dangerous interstate. Trucks are, something, something's slow moving there.
You know, I would bet the Uding family, because years ago, they donated the property there to widen that curb out and make that round radio sign. You know, because I know when you make that turn there with these fifty-three-foot trailers and these long trucks, you know, if you don't swing all the way over to the heavenly hair side of the road, you're up on that wall, because I've had numerous trucks up on that wall. Not mine, but vendors' trucks that have been, you know, up on there and stuff, so, I don't know. I think we need to, we need to work with them with some signs, you know, not only for access, but for safety also. I think that's a wise thing to do.
Any other questions?
That it?
Is it it?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not ready yet, Joe. Happy, you ready to adjourn the work session? You've got more to work. Joe's really wanting to go, but I'm not.
He's always wanting to go.
That's right. I was gonna, I was gonna talk some more.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can talk.
Let, let's, let's let Bob talk for a while.
Bob's done enough.
No, I, I did that for a second.
Oh, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Very good.